I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's probably what we've got.
It sounds awful loud, yeah.
There's something like a hum.
And now I hear it too. I wonder if this one makes volume?
No, yeah, that you want, that one come on as a last.
What, these numbers are good? Those numbers are so good.
The numbers are like grayed out. I don't think he wants you to know.
Now, the grayed out ones are subcategories of the darker ones, so they really relevant to any real conversation.
Okay.
So Ed's come in, you know, look, he's got a relatively small component in your budget here. And he's not, he's actually not asking for another dollar except for maybe a new Corvette or something, what did you say?
Really, 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 really.
Yeah, exactly. So, but his, the revenue side of his operation is an important component in the budget. And, and over the past several years has been a discussion here at the board level about what's going on in the world. And, you know, the amount of building activity and permit activity that we've had, and the revenues have been very strong. But, you know, I think, I think Ed has a pretty good outlook on, on things. So it'd be helpful to hear where, you know, where things are going. So anyway, that's why, that's the main purpose here for, to, to really walk through what, what he's seeing from a, from a building activity. Anyway.
You ready?
We're ready.
So, I mean, we start with applications and building permits. We're starting a downturn. The 2016 revenues and total construction estimated at the bottom, they're about the eight million high on construction and a hundred and forty thousand dollars high because of the country club. So if you take that anomaly out, we're still doing good with revenues and construction costs. Staying in the general average, but we're slipping. We're down to nine million dollars in construction in the village. So we need to be prepared for revenues not to be, because these numbers are based on revenues. The permits are based on value of construction. Permit numbers are going down. Cost of construction is going down, which means revenues will eventually be affected. We know that the 2018, 2019 will have marker ridge on it, marker ridge. That may occur in that fiscal year, but the next fiscal year, nineteen and twenty.
Nothing on the horizon.
Nothing on the horizon. You know, these things take two or three years to get approved, and there's nothing in the approval process. So you can, we need to be prepared for the revenues to level out, idle out, and be similar to what we saw in the past. When you take a small brief history, I do, I do my revenue projections based on taking the average, taking the cost of the construction, taking the revenues and the amount of permits, removing any new housing or large developments to keep it balanced. And this year, after all those calculations, it came out the same revenue projection of $251,000. So we're right on target to stay within that budget frame, but knowing that marker ridge is coming in and that should generate almost $200,000 in revenues if it's all taken in one.
Where's marker ridge?
Uh, the RV property.
Oh, Denardo.
Denardo.
So, so, you know, just to give, to give you perspective, we have a building permit budget of 230,000. You know, this year we've.
If you look in your book, it looks over there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's spread to you, but I guess.
Okay, you owe. It's under public safety, so it's right there.
It's building, it's this one here.
Okay, public safety, right there.
Okay, that's the next page, the next page. So if we go to a, Ren's expense control form for building, you'll see that our revenues are coming.
The previous page.
Yeah, the previous page, yeah. I don't care about this page. This is, oh, it's revenues, yes.
Yeah. So, yeah, so two, so 230,000, so if you, if you.
Plus, plus 10,000.
Building permits?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, 230 is being kept the same, but, but if you look back at the history, so, so this year we're at, we've taken in so far 203. So it appears that we'll be hitting that number. But the year before was 312, the year before that was 425. So you might be thinking.
Yeah, we should be decreasing.
Why are we not increasing this? We keep undercutting it. But, but Ed's been coming, we didn't come last year, but the, I think the year before came and, and pointed out that, you know, that this is an anomaly. These numbers, while their, their real revenue coming in are not sustainable. And it's, and that's starting to prove itself out here. So anyway, just to put it in perspective.
Yeah, I would want, you know, two, a year and a half, two years from now, we'll be sitting here and probably tell them the revenue is.
Yeah, 180,000 of revenue and we're at 230 on a budget, you know what I mean?
It'll be a big hit when it comes. That's why we're, I'm bringing your attention now. We don't want it to be.
So the recommendation is to leave it at the flat level, the same as last?
The flat level as last year for the eighteen, nineteen budget. And we have to have a, a bigger compensation for the nineteen and twenty budget.
Right. Depending on the timing of, of marker ridge, like you're saying.
Yeah, marker ridge.
If marker ridge gets built in this coming fiscal year, then you're going to far exceed your 230.
Right.
But then the following year, this, a year from now, when we're sitting here doing the nineteen, twenty budget, you know, probably not, not, probably.
So just as a point of information, what were the, the developments in 2013 and 14 and 15 that, that increased us from five and six million to 10 and 11 and 12?
The 2016 is the country club.
Right.
The 2015 is volume and new houses.
Right, so.
I mean, you could just.
Starts ridge.
Starts ridge.
Lot of development up there.
Yeah, I mean, you'll get nine, 11 new houses. Yeah, so, you know, you, you go down to 2014, there's only one new house, and the revenues were down to 10 million. In 2013, you can see a, um. There's nothing, yeah.
There's fee changes without fee change.
Yeah, we only go back to 2013 because the fee structure was completely different. Took on a more, not ambitious, but an easier way for the residents to understand the fee schedule.
Fairer.
A fairer too. We went to fee-based, seventeen dollars per thousand. And then we charge by inspection because that's where people were taking advantage of our time. So people that did it right, wanted to do it right, were rewarded by not having us go back. And it's worked very well. If you want to discuss our fee structure right now, we're on, for Westchester County, lower Westchester County, we're on the low side of average. I don't recommend an increase right now. I think the residents have been hit with enough taxes and enough other stuff, other stuff. It's just, it's unbelievable how, you know, here we are, fine tuning, getting our stuff together, giving them a little bit better service, a lot faster getting the permits out than most communities in the area. And we still have this long delay with our planning boards and our ARBs. That survey is actually a little bit longer than us. Hastings doesn't have as many words to go through for additions and stuff like that. But everyone else, Tarrytown is so much us, DeKalb is so much us. So on a Rivertown basis, we're average. I think we're more thorough than the other communities. There's no wiggle room. You'll see in some of the other communities, there's no wiggle room. We don't have that here.
So, Ed, in terms of market ridge, do all the building permits get let at one time or?
It's applicant driven.
So, because obviously to build, what is it, like 20?
Twenty-one plus.
Yeah, 26 units or whatever it is, so it's going to be, most of those are two, two unit buildings. So that's like 12 or 13 structures, right?
Yeah, yeah, off the top of my head, I don't know. There's, there's threes and fours.
Yeah, is that possible to, you have three, there's a single three, I think, and then, then the fours, they afford a. I guess my point is, can he actually process all of those in one year?
And, and I, I don't mean to answer this way, it's none of our business.
No, I know, I'm the same.
And we don't want to, we don't want to be caught being part of that.
I'm the same.
But in any conversation, because people, you know, the expectations here are for us to represent the whole village and not how Mr. Denardo does his business.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about just in terms of experientially, you know, is, is it really going to be a drop off? Like, the talk was, what was being said was after this year, there wouldn't be any market ridge revenue. And I'm wondering if he can actually, you know, it's like, it's the python, the.
Yeah, the infrastructure, I think, was a bigger test than he thought. He's completing it now. Road they should be going in, the implants open up. Health department approval on the testing of the existing water mains within a month or two. Sales office is opening. He just got his ARB approval on the sign for the sales office. So, yes.
They're gearing up.
They're gearing up. I can't promise you all the revenues coming in at once. I don't know what his plan is.
I mean, if, if.
If it comes in, it comes in.
It's feasible that it could, is, is the question.
If it doesn't, it wouldn't be the worst thing.
The idea, it looks like a certain amount of this revenue is probably going to be coming in next year as best.
As a seasoned budget.
Well, it's not coming in. It's not going to be coming in for the, this fiscal year, 2017, 16.
Just sitting here wishing.
Eighteen, nineteen, this week.
You're sitting here wishing that money doesn't come in. That's amazing. You've never heard that before.
But, you know, and that's why, that's why, yeah, that's why kicking the can down the road.
No, I know, I know.
No, I understand, but I'm just saying, it might not be such a.
It's whatever it is, it is. I don't, I don't regulate it, yeah.
But look, the, the end of the day, it's clear that you all understand it. So that's the, all we can do is understand what the issue is, and you're ready to react to it when you, when you have to, you know? And, and we're not playing games with this number by overextending ourselves now just so that next year we've got a huge problem and, you know, that type of thing. So, and you've never, that's, that's been the theme from, from us and, you know, all of us. And this, and the board's been great like that about not overextending, you know, not playing games with that surplus number like we talked about last time, or in this case, you know, one that we, we know is going to be higher next year. At least we're pretty confident it'll be higher. You could play a lot of games with that if you wanted to. But then you'd be sitting here wondering what to do next year, you know? So, anyway.
We must seem to keep running for reelection too, so, you know, just print ourselves.
So the other, the other point that is probably worth covering is on the expense, first of all, on the expense side, there's not much to his budget.
So that's the second page here, right?
Yes. It's basically personnel.
And this is actually come down now.
Yeah, so.
Well, it's one loss.
Yeah, it's not overall, yeah. But it's worth, it was, maybe it's worth just covering a little bit about the staff that you have and the plan for handling what's coming and the plan for when what's coming is no longer here.
Yeah.
We just built it, we did just hire an assistant.
That's correct. Brief staff duties, we have a part-time building inspector. He works 15 hours a week. He's a retired building inspector from Yonkers. We, he is here because of the country club and Denardo. Denardo winds down, or even gets slow enough, that, that position will be eliminated. He's done a great job in between keeping busy with sending out letters to everyone who has an open permit, which is helping us not be so backed up at closing times and at busy times. File, send out emails. It's really great. From 2013 on, everyone's in a system. So we just type an email into, into the email they send, and they're giving a heads up that they have an open permit, give us a call. And that's why you'll see inspections and COs are pretty high.
It is.
It is, yeah. Last year, last year the COs were high because of the, the end result of the.
Some of your COs.
Oh, okay.
The end result of a, the reassessment, people closing out permits, they have their predate letters. So you can see our, our average is probably around 700 to 800 inspectors. We've now 1600, in the 2016 year, and now 1,112 in this past 17 year.
Can I tell you what a predate letter is?
A predate letter is when a house is built before there were records of building permits and COs. It's just a document that assists the bank in understanding when it was built and that it doesn't have a CO. Without a predate letter, a bank usually will not give a whole now. We have a policy that's been in place since 2003, which we go in, do an inspection, we do a, um, a report on the existing, it drives with a survey, a hand drawing of the house, a Greenberg card and a few other documents. We take all those documents together and make sure that everything is there and supposed to be there because we won't want to write a document to an undocumented, to an illegal part of the house. We do an inspection and if everything is right, we give them a predate letter. If it's not right, we hold off on the predate letter and we help them legalize the offending item. It's usually a basement bathroom, sometimes a first floor powder room behind the front entrance door. We have good records from 1956, and before that we had none. And after that, a lot of stuff happened. The Tyler report, we know, is not worth using for illegal documents, but it's a tool to.
Yeah, that's the minimum.
Yeah, that's what we.
And if there's, if you encounter a significant life safety issue.
We address that immediately.
It gets addressed. In other words, you don't just get a predate letter.
No, it has to meet, it has to meet the New York State, it has to meet the New York State Property Maintenance Code, which is a safety code. It's not a building, but that's the building code it shows in it, but it's a smoke detector. There's handrails, safe steps, that elimination at the doors, little things, heat, you know, little things.
Electricity.
No, no, it doesn't have to have electricity. That's not a requirement in the state code.
Also have the village to worry about.
No, sorry. So a predate letter, you'll, and they're good for life. We don't update them. Other communities have, it's called a continuing CO. I don't think we're ready for that yet. Maybe we have a good handle on our housing stock, where our communities have let it go, where there's a lot of multifamilies where there shouldn't be. We have a few. We didn't take any, last year, we didn't take any undocumented dwellings out. The year before, we took out a couple to the predate process.
What does take out mean?
Can double. Right, yeah. We've never had it, we've always had cooperative residents in Irvington that have done the right thing and hired somebody. Otherwise, we've never had to really push the subject.
Honestly, the violations are hidden in your records, 2017.
Yeah.
I guess, honestly, it's not true. 2002 is 42, never mind.
Yeah.
Why you said that?
There's, um, yeah, violations are a funny thing.
You're receiving them.
Um, the, the number varies every year dramatically. There's no real.
Primary reason.
Primary reason. Last year, we had a lot of people upset with neighbors. They were almost, I have them, were, they weren't.
Really?
Yeah. See, we save on gas, not like, especially in the environment.
Yeah, and, and actually, part of having a, an assistant, a part-time assistant allows for some of the follow-up on violations.
The other half of the CD, our assistant is found them. We have a system of doing the whole village every week. We'll do a certain section each time, each day of the week, we have a different section on the three days he works. So he's covering the whole village and the dry line. So we, we rotate the hours of the day, we rotate, rotate the days he works. So we've got a good feel for.
Work going on.
Work going on. The, the, that number might be underestimated because if we find somebody just driving down Jeffrey Park with two red trucks and tobaccos on them and, you know, unloading rocks, we'll just tell them.
You can't do that.
You can't do that. And if they comply, you won't see that violation there. This compliance over conviction, that's our motto.
Yeah, we're not interested.
We're not interested in the revenue from it. We're not interested from the judge, but we're more incapable of doing it.
And that's, Matt Spencer's hiring helped with.
Matt Spencer's hiring helped with the two chronic ones we're working on. Just knowing that he's there have really given us, it's a great tool, it's a leverage. It's, you know.
Right, but the idea is not to necessarily have to bring him into court.
No, but now that they know we have him.
More compliance.
Um, I'm getting compliance without, without even doing the process. They're saving the village money, saving the applicants money.
And it gets where we want to go.
Yeah, we're not looking to, like I said, bring him onto court, but we're getting compliance.
So chronic, you mean places that continually have violations and.
That refuse to correct their violations and, or.
You probably know about them, but we won't go into that.
We can't go into that here.
But you know about them.
Want to understand what you're talking about.
And I can tell you that being, you know, standing in a, in a deli with him and seeing, having him see a truck with sheet rock on it going down Main Street, he'll get out into a truck and follow it. So that's a, that's a, they stop at nothing to make sure they know exactly what's going on. You know, it doesn't mean that every single violation in existence, of course not, but, but it's.
Keep it moving.
It's not the first, it won't, it wouldn't be the first time we just got up and walked out.
Really?
I've been in, I've been in staff meetings on Mondays, a lot of trucks go down and we'll go look for it later. Well, you know, it's, it's a small community, so we don't want to be overbearing, but the same, same time we come off overbearing.
You want to stop something before it happens that's a negative for the village.
Well, it looks like the boiler busts too have. That's what we do with our computer program.
Boiler busts, I'm using that as insane.
Yeah, well, we don't have to talk to anybody more. They set the desk, they look up what they want. You know, your system be better? Yes. Is it fabulous? Yes. We don't have any attractions. I don't think people want to know what we're, I don't think they want us to know what they're looking at. And I think having it on the computer at the desk is a, is a positive move.
That's interesting. Sure, because they, they find a violation and they have to decide what they're going to do about it. But if you know this.
In the past, it used to stop the clerk and myself. We had to find a file, go over the ball, storage room, look for it, pull it out. Inevitably know everything that's going on. Now, the railto's coming before they list the houses, the local railto's, so the out of towners don't. And that's working about. Every year we, we, that's why we don't ask for more revenues. Every year we don't ask for next years on the budget. We always find these little things. Fifteen years ago, it took 30 minutes to issue an electrical permit, not X3, and no allowance. So, you know, those were the big ones. Now they're, they're not so big anymore.
It's, it's a lot of the reason, and we talked about this in a previous, previous budget discussion. It's a lot of the reason why we were able to convert office administrative staff into office field professionals, you know? It's why we have another inspector, but we have an increased bodies, you know? We've just converted the bodies.
And that's the new inspector, I think.
That's more quality.
We've got a quality inspector, fully trained already, before we, you guys appointed her. Profession, right, all the P's. But she can also do clerk. So it's not, it's not an inspector of myself that must work to do the work, understand the work. She can do the plan reviews for rolling average and not so average permits. She can go out to the field doing inspections of all residential homes, commercial and working homes. We don't have a lot of permission, so it's actually a benefit for everywhere, everything. Our part-time guy can come and go as we need. If we get too slow, we'll just don't stay home. He's happy to.
That's great.
So the topic I want to bring up, which is the perennial topic, so going all electronic. I mean, the last time we've talked, we talked about this periodicly in the course of the years, as I agree with the new rural retire soon.
Six years, three months.
Yeah. So.
Not that I'm telling.
So the point is that we always come, you know, a lot of the hurdle about being able to accept electronic documents is over with. But the issue seems to be still a timing of processing documents. Can we talk about that a bit to see?
You have, the, the schedule for the planning board is pretty well set because it's the first model. And I think what we have for the planning board is a model for the rest of the village and probably the rest of the county. A lot of people admire our system, but it's labor intensive. What we do is we receive the applications. We have two weeks for the planning board to get them reviewed, commented before the meeting. So it takes about a week to upload them onto the computer. Once they're on the computer, residents, board members can review them. The planning board, if they chose, could eliminate a lot of their printed documents. Being, that being said, it's very hard to get some of the old school people to work electronically. Your ARB, the deadline is on a Monday, and it's one week to a meeting. We don't have the time to get it in there. Only to make it worse, the planning board and the ARB deadline, once a month, over the same week. So it's impossible to get done.
You have, you have two ARB meetings a month, which makes it, makes the timing, so you're flexible.
So the, the amount of work and labor and the review process that the planning board requires takes up all of my time for almost a week and plus a couple of days, plus pre-meetings. So the only way to get the ARB uploaded was to, was to give us two weeks is to change the schedule. I've got a few ideas. I don't think it's good for this round table to discuss, but it would, it would involve a major change in how we do business.
You mean, Matt, the ARB or just?
I think in general. I think, you know, getting the ARB to work with the planning board or, um, it's, it's very complicated. It's not, I don't think it's for this forum right now. There's lots of ideas and different things to do, but you'd have to put it on a two-week schedule. You'd have to put it where it would alternate not one week with the planning board, but two weeks with the planning board. So the planning board meeting would be the ARB deadline for the second meeting. The ARB, I think, I don't know, you know, I, I, I have, I have different, different ideas, one of them.
Suffice, suffice it to say that this is a bit of a holy grail for him. We would love it if the residents didn't have to submit 18 paper copies.
There's a lot of, uh, I think, the people, the folks that are architects on the boards, I think they're for that all electronic. So my second part of this is not to go too deep because I'm more than willing to sit down with you and, and hear it, you know.
And it's slow too.
But.
Yeah, right.
During the next snowstorm, which might be tonight, especially. But the other thing is, uh, you know, one of the things I see down here is that it would be good. One of the enabling things would be if there was actually a way to access the digital files to the machine. You know, the problem is there's no laptop down here typically unless.
What, for the meetings?
Yeah.
It's not a problem.
Yeah, we can, we can.
My plan is to have a laptop down.
Or have a direct network connection.
Yeah.
Or you still need a.
But don't get hung up on the technicals part.
No, no, I'm just thinking that part of that.
This is all set up.
Yeah, I know, they can stand it. And I know people do come in and do.
But it's not going to get uploaded for the ARB. There's, there's physically no time. Additional staff.
That's, that's where the effort has to be made is to.
And additional staffing, which I'm not prepared to spend your money on.
That's, that's where we have to talk through about the benefits and, and costs to the residents as well.
Right.
Because there's, you know, but anyways, the point is that as long as it's not an impediment, and I didn't think there was, to getting something down.
No, it's, it's time and labor.
No, it's, yeah, we have to look at our processes, that's all.
So.
And Ed's obviously thought about it, so.
I mean, I've got a few different ideas and they, they all involve major changes of how we do business, the ARB and planning board. And it's only worth for that time.
But it's worth working for. No, no questions.
Hoping that we, we can get some motion on it.
I, I would support what, what you're saying, Mark, you know, in terms of hearing.
No, but.
Yeah, and I know you are too.
Well, the planning board is the model.
Yeah.
What we know with the planning board is, is for all boards. So, and, you know, if it wasn't for the members, we would get rid of the 18 copies, and we'd be down to 10 easy. The library would have a lot.
And that's real money, by the way. It's not.
Yes.
Hundreds of dollars for the applicants.
Change. I know there has to be at least one, probably a paper that I mean, meaning just in terms of, you know, like.
But it's really easy per shelf over there on the corner. I made them that.
Put one copy there.
Yeah, okay, because I know, for instance, with.
But that's the answer.
ARB changes have to be put onto the document.
Well, that's a different issue. They shouldn't be, they shouldn't be open at the meetings. There's no one present from the building department. We'll get to that. That's another issue.
I know this isn't the forum. I'm just saying, I, I definitely support Mark's, you know, line of questioning and desire to make it work. And I know you do, so I'd love to just.
Yeah, we'll set, we'll set it, we'll set it as a formal goal.
And I think.
That's good, because, you know, we have talked about it as long as I've been on the board.
Yeah, but the planning board's working, the planning board is modeled, it's working pretty well.
Yeah.
And if we can just enhance it, I think it'd be fine. It's like taking the tree, it's like taking the tree permits and putting it to our system to track better. It's a different way of tracking than you're doing. Are you ready for that? Because we would enjoy, we would enjoy that because then we wouldn't have to go shopping and looking for a tree permit. We could just punch it in the car and have it.
I don't know why it's not being done, but.
No, and it's, and I'm not saying it's, it's not being done because nobody wants it. It's another thing to do.
It's another thing to do.
Right.
And I just want to point out that, you know, I'm not trying to bust out my trust, because I know there's been a lot of movement forward over the last few years in terms of digitization and blah, 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 getting the databases together and the forms. So that's all good stuff. Now it's like.
Take it to the next step.
We still have work to do. You know, there's, we have, we were hoping in February to initiate a new FAR and coverage check, checklist that, and it's done, it works, where a resident can figure out their coverage requirements without coming and bothering to hire an architect or an engineer.
Like a spreadsheet that can be.
Spreadsheet that automatically tabulates, and it's ready to go. Putting it into our system is taking the time. Having our computer guy take it into a way that we can archive it and a manner to export data differently than just the way it goes in has been a little bit of a challenge.
Complexity at our time.
No, we'll get it. I mean, I think I've showed, did I show you those permits?
No, you did not, but I-
I think, Larry, did you use them? You used the coverage one?
You showed me how it worked.
Yeah, you did try.
That's gonna be good, because there's so much-
And I think even improvements like that, that, you know, there's some line when you say you fix one page in an application, but it's, I think it helps all the residents and the applicants get the answer. You know, if the board says to say your coverage is wrong because you didn't do it right, and we can avoid that, that might save an applicant one more.
And it saves you time on the phone.
Yeah, and we're not, yeah. And it's a good open government.
Are there some communities that have figured out that form?
There's a few communities that have that form online, and a few communities that have it auto-tapping, but they don't have it tied into a system. We have a, a one-off system that we share, we don't share. We, we use the same system as Hastings and Tops Ferry. Other communities, Rockland and New Jersey use it, Norchell uses it, and they all use it. Well, Irvington, Tops Ferry, and Hastings are using it very similarly. Norchell, for instance, will take payments online for their electrical plumbing permits. We'll get that. One more thing to do. It doesn't take a lot. I think it's just sitting down front. So we have these things to work on. It's not like we're sitting still, just doing our job and getting through the day. We have lots of open-ended projects that we wanna finish, and in the spare time we do it. When two thousand eight came and got slow, we went to scanning. We scanned all our building permits all the way back to history. I don't think any, many communities have that and available on the computer. There's some reconciliation that has to be done, because we got busy in two thousand and ten, and it's Chrome expedition. But that reconciliation gets done on rainy days, which doesn't rain.
Well, I applaud this effort. I definitely do, and I think Mark is probably the most knowledgeable person.
Mark, I have spent some time on-
Once, once he's in touch, and he can be in touch with the rest of us, and we can give the updates, or Larry, but whoever.
Bring some fresh comments.
But it's, I think it's something that-
No caffeine for him.
The citizens will appreciate the greater digitization of this whole process.
No, it's light years ahead of where it was.
Yeah.
No more index.
Thank you.
Anything else?
So I don't know, I was just starting to look at this.
You're too big for a Corvette, so.
That's good.
I think it's two corvettes now.
So the line for the two, the two regular employees, and then the part-time person is the, is the other one, right? So it's two employees per-
Yeah, we have Sarah, sixty-five percent of her time budgeted to us. We have Manny, fifteen hours a week budgeted to us, and then we have one full-time employee. So we really only have one full-time employee myself. So two full-time employees, and two core members.
Manny, right.
So it's in here, as I did, the building department has its own proper, you know, expense revenue department. And then the second one is our planning board, and there's no changes there. We had a line before.
Does the planning board, does it make use of any of their training budget?
I don't think they have a separate training budget. We have kind of a, we have like a lumped- Yeah, lumped in one altogether. So there, there are some that take advantage of it. But I, I don't have the exact number.
We have a specific line within the planning department.
Right.
Sometimes, some of the things are free, I know, like it's this time festival, like the, the pace up. But sometimes there's stormwater, there's other kinds of programs that could be interesting, but-
We encourage, we encourage attendance.
They're, they're sent information probably on, and I think that comes in as-
Planning iteration.
Forward to, you haven't turned anyone down for budget reasons, right?
No, 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 there's a separate budget, like I said, for-
Yeah. But it hasn't run out of it.
No, 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 no.
I mean, don't they need that in order to keep some sort of administrative education? They need continued education for word references?
Yes, technically.
Technically.
Four hours.
Can you brush? Thanks, sir. See you the year.
Tooner. Do you want me to, do you want me to plug you, sit down with you one day in the next few weeks? I don't know what, your slope here.
We're in our, we're actually in our slope group, which has business slope right now, where spring market's coming.
You guys ready, you want? Three seats, three seats. Hey, you made the effort to come here tonight.
It's not a snowstorm, I don't know.
Yeah, a little spitting.
You have so much salt out there.
If you open your books, there's a section before.
Call Con Edison.
Nice to see everyone.
Tell us we go back to Park City. Start at the beginning.
Well, I think if you take a look at the, the cover sheet, and you take out the first three things, which are the, the salaries and the contra, and the CSEA stuff, we're really only talking about asking for a net increase of twenty thousand, two hundred dollars, which I can tell you in all my years here is probably the lowest amount we've ever come in looking for or asking for. You know, we're comfortable that we have the ability with the increases that are there. In fact, just on the increases, the, the three that we should discuss, I think, which are the ones that stick out the most. The one, let's start at the bottom. The Halsey Pond treatment is one that I was, Larry just put in recently because of the work we're doing with the reservoir at Halsey Pond and the study and things we needed to do. So that was a last-minute addition to the budget. Our number actually was at thirteen thousand before that. And then the two big ones are the camp personnel, which is the seven-three-one-oh-four-fifty-nine line and the seven-three-one-oh-four-eight-six line. Now, both of those total twenty-eight thousand dollars, but they're offset with fees and an increase in revenue. On the day camp side, our day camp director, Maureen DePolly, made a presentation to the Autoware PAC and really was looking to try to add some additional trips in addition to, you know, making sure she can maintain the high-level staff that we have. And most importantly, at residents' requests, we're changing our extended hours program to go until four o'clock in the afternoon. Now, when you consider years ago, camp you stand at one o'clock, and then camp you stand at one-thirty, and ended at one-thirty with a chance to stay till three for extended hours, and parents have really just dictated they need us, especially working parents. So we're going to four o'clock this year, and the good thing about that is in the past, the school wouldn't want us there that long, but they're willing to let us stay. We have a great relationship, as I've told you many times, with the staffs at the Dalzane School, at all schools. So there's, and they're happy to have us stay there, and I think it's meeting a real need for the community. So, you know, we analyzed what it would cost us, we looked at our fees, and we, we increased the fee for day camp for residents, non-residents, and other. And, you know, we, we think it's an important change to the day camp. You know, I mentioned something right there that I'd like to, to stress too. I think the one thing that we've had to do often is we have to have the ability to adapt and change, because the community tells us what they want us to do. You know, with the opening of the JCC and with some challenges from other programs being run in other departments, you know, we don't look at if, I'm just gonna pick a program. If, if Music with Mark, which has actually been with us for thirty years for some reason, stopped getting kids in it and no one signed up for it, it doesn't mean that Music with Mark was a failure. It means that people who want that type of program may be able to get it for less money through another spot. So we look to find out, well, what, what do we need, because parents, you know, are telling us. And believe it or not, one of the places that has been a tremendous resource to help us decide where to go with our toddler programs has been the amazing change in the nature center and the Irvington Woods Committee. Because many of the things we've done up there with the new group and the new energies, we've brought in a lot of families. In fact, Rick, I know Rick, you worked close with Ann Jaffe doing the cider press, and all we kept saying to each other as we were doing it is, "Who's that? Who's that? Who's that?" 'Cause there were so many new families with kids up there, and it was, for a lot of them, it was their first introduction to us. So, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to find ways. Day camp, for the first time ever last Saturday, had an open house at the Dalzane School. Because we wanted parents who are gonna be putting their kids into the camp for the first time, or parents who may be, you know, geez, a village camp, as good as this private camp. So we brought in our key staff, and they sat down there, and parents were able to come in, see where their kids would be, look at the classrooms, meet Maureen, meet Nicole, and it worked really well. Because we, we found that Teenscape, which we'll talk about next, which went from being on its deathbed to bursting at the seams again, changed when we started offering the winter, off-season Teenscape programs. Because those kids, seventh and eighth graders, got to know each other. I know Brian Ronan's-
He said it's the best camp he's ever been in, and we paid a lot more for a lot of the kids.
Oh, kids.
It's pretty cool when you-
I was gonna say, it's pretty cool when the mayor says that about it.
Did I get the line right, Joe?
Yeah, thanks. You got it. But we don't stop. Everything's a continuation. Everything's a learning process, and a lot of times you have to adapt. And we found that those kids, if we could keep them together off-season, they'd look more forward to coming to camp. Just as an example, this time last year in Teenscape, when we were just rebuilding it, we collective in the two sessions, I think, had fifteen kids. Right now, session one has twenty-five kids already in it, and session two has twenty-one kids in it. So thirty was really what we would, would hope for, but we think we could hit forty in both. And the budget is calling, is, is prepared for forty kids.
All right, so the budget is prepared for forty, and the revenue increase would, would make up for that?
That is correct.
If you ended up being less, then there'd be less revenue.
So if we end up with thirty kids and we don't bring in the ten thousand in revenue, we'll have ten thousand less in expenses. So we would much rather be planning on, you know, being at our capacity than having to come back and say, "Hey, we need to have more kids. Can we increase the budget? Can you transfer?" We think there's a good chance we'll hit our capacity. Day camp has been consistent. We've been between two-hundred and fifty and three-hundred kids the past five years, which is a huge number for a community camp without a swimming pool. So, so those two numbers, you know, that, don't be scared by those, 'cause those are offset. And then, and the other things, if you look at them, it, it's really, you know, I'll answer any questions you have on it, but just running down to CAB supplies. The only bad thing about the grant is the grant can't pay for food for the meetings. And, and we get, we get at our CAB meetings forty-plus people. And the kids who come-
Most of them are kids.
Who wanna eat.
Who hit that table.
Yes, yes. Unfortunately, I have been over- I've been overruled, and I no longer can bring in the breakfast we did, so we've switched to yogurt and fruits. And it's not exciting, but, but, but Tanya and Allison. One month I just had to bring in a tray of donuts just to make myself feel better, so. Yeah, so, so we, so that's the increase there. Park supplies are just the nature of the beast. The beautification committee, I've asked for an additional thousand dollars. You know, that group works very hard. You know how often they're out there between the spring planting, the summer planting, the fall planting, and they're always trying to squeeze in an extra couple of flats. I really think they're deserving of it. It's a volunteer-based group, and it's, it's not a, a number that will, you know, it's not shaking the, the boots.
Glad to see we're buying more geese.
Well, we're buying more geese, yes.
Perennial thorn in Joe's side.
You know, the-
Two dozen geese for the Mars.
The, the two thousand dollars is, is to keep trying to find new and better ways.
Nothing's worked, so.
Nothing's worked. Everything has worked. Nothing has sustained. You know, they get smarter than the rest of us. The good news is, with the exception of-
Geese to figure out how to get.
There's, there's-
That's your day camp.
Well, well-
Send the day camp your other geese. That'll work. Three of them screaming kids.
We were up at, we were up at Halsey Pond in the spring one day, because we had had a call that there were eggs, and it was actually in March, and there shouldn't have been eggs. So the company we use actually came out and did us a favor, and they went out, there's a little island right off of the castle, and you could see the eggs, and we were like, "Oh, my God, what are we gonna do?" And they just happened to be eggs that never, you know, never hatch. But there were literally a thousand geese at the pond that day. We had never seen it as bad as it was. And for the first time ever, if you're a Facebook follower, you may have seen this, we've had geese at Memorial Park.
Really?
Oh, really?
Ever gone at Memorial Park, yeah. I remember Mike Tool and BJ posted a picture of it, and I wanted to pull it off the screen and get rid of it. But, but obviously, they are still a menace to us, so we're looking to, we may have to spend a little bit more money to keep trying to get rid of them.
Is there any community anywhere that we know of that's had sustained success?
Not using means that we would wanna follow. We are still very, very careful to not use any products or materials that be, could be considered to be hazardous, dangerous, or, you know, you have to control how you do it. The, the good news is, is that there are a couple of products that we wanted to try and had never been able to, because New York State wouldn't approve them. They are now approved, so we're actually going to be trying a couple of different products. One of the things we're looking to do is to put a new fertigation system in at Sina Hudson Park.
What is it?
Fertigation.
Fertigation.
Right. What happens is you actually put your fertilizers-
Oh, okay.
Into the system, and when your sprinklers go on, it comes out through the sprinkler, so you don't have to apply it. And when we built Sina Hudson Park, we put one in, but it never worked. So we're, we're trying to do that. And now that we've increased the irrigation to all of Sina Hudson Park, it would be a good thing to be able to do. And we could also do it at Memorial Park, because we're prepared to, to, to have the fertigation system go there.
Some product you can put in that will-
Yes. Well, there's, there's definitely some to try, yes, that are now approved.
Like the smell of barbecue or something?
Great, great, great flavors. What makes them nervous?
Really?
Yeah. You never heard the story about the five cases of grape Kool-Aid we bought?
It's true.
Belmont, Belmont-
Joe's drinking the Kool-Aid.
Belmont racetrack, there was an article that, as they prepared for the big day, that they tried a, something that's in the grape flavor. There's a certain chemical that geese did not like, and they treated their entire infield and had success. So we didn't know where to get the product at the time, but, so we bought grape Kool-Aid, and we put it all through Atthis Park. And it rained. And we had purple grass for about a week and a half.
How did the geese like it?
They love it.
I think they've all developed diabetes. So, um-
So anyway, this, this irrigation fertilizer thing would be some kind of product that the geese will not mind.
Correct.
Maybe we'll try.
Correct. The problem with most of the products is, once you apply them, if it rains, they go away. So the cost, like, there are products out there right now that we could use, and it would cost us between probably about two thousand dollars an application. So if we put it down tomorrow, and the weather looked good, and all of a sudden the weather changed, it'd be a waste. So, so we've, we've been very selective to what we've done. We've tried so, you know, how many things we've tried, and we'll keep trying, and we'll keep trying, so. The one thing we are doing now, and this was- The one thing we are doing now, um, and this was a request from the chief, Chief Serone, and we thought it was a very good one. In lieu of the sensitivity of, of guns and bangs and noises, um, my staff have all been instructed, prior to shooting the guns in the park, the whistlers, they call headquarters to let the desk know. "It's Ronnie Hardware, I'm in Sina, I'll be, I'll be shooting the launchers." And with, it's actually something that's, it's a good thing. Because as soon as they get that call, now they know. It's the rec, it's the staff, you know, and everybody knows that people are a little touchy and sensitive, and you can understand it, and we don't wanna be the reason to make anybody, um, be upset by what we're doing there, so. So, I, you know, on, before we go into the other general stuff, these are the things I'm asking you to approve. If you need any more detail on any of those, the, the special event increases is the, um, the Turkey Trot, um, is actually, is very expensive because of, of the need to close Broadway down and bring in so many staff. And we've been getting close to three-hundred people the last few years at the race. So, it's, um, you know, it's partially funded by, um, the Girl Scouts, um, and, you know, we don't wanna raise the fee too high, 'cause it's really a community event. And, you know, for those of you who haven't seen it, you get dads pushing their kids, and moms pushing their kids in their strollers, who's carrying one on their back, you know, you'll see, you know, entire Girl Scout troops and Boy Scout troops, yeah, together doing it. So, it's really a, a fun community event. But, you know, close, you know, running on Broadway is, is a very scary thing, and unfortunately, the chief's on our side for that, and, and he makes sure that we're safe out there, so. But it's, but again, it, 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 it's an expensive event for, for an hour event. It's about seven grand, so.
Is there a desire to find an additional sponsor? Or you-
We're always looking. No, we're always looking.
You would be happy if there were such a-
We don't say-
Yeah, okay.
Um, as I've joked with Larry many times, since two thousand and ten, I feel like I work for the United Way. Because I'm always out looking for donations, so.
And the Girl Scouts wouldn't be-
I think they do-
Oh, they did, if there was another-
No, because we, what we do is, we give them, they'll, we put their name on the shirts, they sell their, they get tables, they get the setup, it's visible for them. The Girl Scouts have been extremely generous and easy to work with over the years, so.
They do a big sale that day.
Yep.
A bunch of things that they do.
I've been there.
The difficulty with fundraising for regular, um, rec activities, including our special events, is we have to do so much with our work with the FACE Committee. So, you know, you can only hit that rock so many times, and how many times can I ask Jordang to, to be a sponsor, you know? So, you, so we try to, to find different groups, and try to get people to wanna have ownership of events, if you will. So, um, you know, the Girl Scouts being, you know, with the, uh, with the Turkey Trot is a good thing. FACE does the hayride, um, you know, the fire department does the parade. So, we, we do, we do have a lot of people that are invested in our events, and, and sure, we, we, there's always another line on a shirt to put someone else if they step forward, or another sign to be made, if you will, so.
So, somebody, if some potential donor wanted to work specifically with the Turkey Trot, they would just say, "Hey, I'd like to help sponsor the Turkey Trot."
Well, as long as they understand what the, what the race is, what, what the intent is, that it's, you know, we're not, you can't come in and sell products or anything like that. You know, you have to fit into what we're trying to do, but we, we would, we would not turn anyone away, so. Any, any questions on any of, of, of the other increases? The Halsey Pond treatment, we've already covered.
Well, we didn't, one thing I wanted to say about that is, um, you know, that, we put that budget line in, in there, um, almost as a placeholder at this point. Um, we, we did do a water quality analysis report, which I'm sure you, you all read and memorized.
I don't know anybody that can memorize.
Both, yeah. It's covered all.
There's a placeholder for the reservoirs.
We do, yeah. Yeah, in fact, that's something that changed since the water department was here, is we did add a similar number over, over to there. So, um, you know, that report, I don't wanna go into the great detail now, 'cause we could certainly talk about it or even look at it offline, but, um, the report recommended a combination of, of aeration, which we already have up at Halsey, and, uh, a biological treatment, not a chemical treatment, but a biological process several times over the course of the spring and summer, uh, to, uh, to treat the pond, uh, in a way to keep it, what we hope is to keep it healthy, and to avoid, uh, as long as possible, the use of chemicals or any other type of treatment. So, um, we did have to use chemicals up there once. It was an important and necessary, uh, almost one-time-only thing that we did that really got the pond back, you know, the duckweed gone and got the pond back into some, some health. Hopefully, this'll continue to maintain it. But it's open for discussion, and not tonight necessarily, but, um, so if you have an opportunity to review the report, look at the recommendations. If you have questions about it, we can get answers from the consultant that we used. Um, we, we met as a staff, Joe and Jim and I met, and we're not experts in all of this. Jim probably knows more than both of us combined, but, um, you know, we did have some questions for the company, and they answered the questions. We feel comfortable that, that at least trying to do this biological approach, um, makes sense, uh, to try to keep the pond inbound and the reservoir as well, so.
Could you send that around again?
Yeah.
I was gonna say, it's just top of my email box.
Must be tortured again?
Yeah.
That was torturous reading that, thank you. It's a long read.
Yeah, no, take a look. And there's, there's an executive, and list of, there's an executive summary and a list of recommendations.
That's what you wanna go late to.
Go late to that.
If it's getting late at night, you know.
Don't wanna read the tables?
If you can read the tables, I gotta tell ya, that's it tough.
It's not, it's not a big item, but it's something that, you know, we know about, we'd be irresponsible if we didn't at least acknowledge.
Is that sort of the ballpark of what that kind of treatment?
Yeah.
Multiple biology?
Yeah, it's three to four treatments over the course of the summer for each water body, so seven here, seven there. It's about what they recommend.
And the, I'm sorry.
And some follow-up, and follow-up testing and analysis to-
Yeah.
-to ensure the effectiveness, right?
And are, are, are aeration systems sufficient?
We believe the one at Halsey is, in fact, it's probably oversized. Um, the reservoir does not have one, and that's something that will be up for future discussion. We're not suggesting that we dive into that project right now. Actually, it would be nice if, if the, the biologic approach works and-
Yeah, this pond is a much, uh, shallower body of water, so that's the bigger say. It's about eight-foot average, they determined.
Lot of mud in the bottom.
Yeah, we'd need a much bigger aeration system for the reservoir.
So, that aeration system just remind me, is that pre-floating? Uh, or is it tethered? It, it's tethered. But solar? Solar, and we did extensive repairs on it two, three years ago. Um, there was some, the company will come up usually once every two years and inspect it and make recommendations, and up until the last time, we were okay, but there was a lot that needed to be replaced. Actually, believe it or not, the panels had rocks thrown through them, so, and they broke the glass. Solar panels were broken, so we had to replace a whole arm. But, since that-
Probably geese.
Yeah.
That's not what they would do, the geese would do those.
Since that, the, the upgrade and the repairs-
After the four years, after they have the Kool-Aid.
The ponds look better than it has. I mean, look, it's not, it's not clear blue water, you know, but, but it's healthy. You need enough oxygen in to start, uh, helping the, the mud in the bottom decompose as well. It's the whole process of getting air, their aeration back into the water.
Right. So, anyway, well, I'll send around that report so you can read it again.
Just, just quickly, covering a couple of areas, I, I, I mentioned it before, there's, there's still tremendous, tremendous excitement with the Irvington Woods and the O'Hara Nature Center. The new members have really added a, a great deal of life. They've already scheduled a bunch of upcoming programs. Uh, April fourteenth will be a Trails cleanup day, um, and we'll add a few other things to it. The first Sunday in June will be the Wine and Cheese Open House like we had last year. We've also scheduled-
What was that date, sir?
Uh, it's the first Saturday in June, first Sunday in June, I apologize. And then, uh, they're working on things like movie night, campfire night, family fun nights.
Archangel night.
Yeah, we did schmores at the Fall Event, which is where a lot of those new people came. We also have, are working again with the Green Bird Nature Center. Um, they've approached us, uh, on two different occasions. I've had meetings with their staff on, twice. I met with their executive director last week. She's very anxious to try to partner with us, and we'll probably be announcing some new programs very shortly. I want the Woods Committee to be the first ones to hear about that, but once that happens. We're thrilled to have Ann Jaffe Holmes back with us. Ann came, I, I, Ann came in, and I basically said, "Look, we can go in a couple ways here." I said, "Number one, you can just come back to the committee." I said, "Number two, I got some ideas for you as far as programs go, and number three, anything else you want." And she said, "I'd love to become part of the committee again." And, uh, you know, one of the things that we're really looking to do is, we wanna make sure this year that there are set times where if residents wanna go to the Nature Center, they're not dependent on finding someone on if there's an activity or a program that will have some hours. So, a person like Ann is in the hallway, and someone comes in, and they're new, and we give them a map, and they say, "Hey, how do I get to Hermit's Grave?" And they can say, "Hey, come on, I'll take a walk with you." We're not saying all day, but we want people to know there'll be times they can just go up there and, and, and have a chance to learn more about the place. You know, it's, there's still a lot of people who don't know much about it, but with this new group of young moms who really, I mean, you know, we're, um, going to be doing a program, I'm very excited about, where, uh, young children, especially children who may be struggling with reading, will come in, and, uh, with a therapy dog, they will actually read to the therapy dog. It'll be set up like a program.
Where you call-
Yeah, it's, um, most of you know who George Berger is. Uh, George, Jane, Jane's, uh, partner. Uh, George is very involved with a, um, an animal shelter in Rockland County, and they developed this, it's actually in many of the Rockland schools, where it's part of the curriculum where they do this. And Peggy O'Hara, who you all know, has a therapy dog, so the two of them are going to come in, and with other people, and it'll be set up like a program. You'll pay a fee, you'll come in. We developed a library on wheels where kids can come in, and they'll pick a book, and there'll be a carpet, and they'll sit. And they found that children's reading increases by twenty-two percent when they read to a dog as opposed to a parent or a teacher, so.
Better listeners, I think.
Love that, yeah. They're great listeners.
My dog is there, I beat more.
And again, you know, there, the value is, we're gonna get people that might not have been looking to the rec, who'll try this, and then, there's another client for something else, or a different program, or a new volunteer, so.
Woods Committee will also have a presence at Spring Fest like they did at Rocktoberfest with, you know, an arts and crafts, uh, several arts and crafts, uh, things to-
Yep, they're gonna, they're gonna do individual pots this year, where children can plant a flower, paint it, and then they can paint a little birdhouse also if they wanted to, so. So, they're, from again, where we were to where we are, it's just great.
Remember two years ago, you saying-
Told ya, I didn't know we'd be here.
If we're still gonna have an itch to sever, doesn't it?
Well, Nikki Cottington deserves a great deal of credit, because, um, if you don't remember, I approached Nikki, um, at a time when we were really in a bad spot, and I asked her if she would consider, for two years, taking on the role as chair to help lead us through. And she agreed to do it, and I know she, she's already asked me five emails, "Is it time?" And I keep asking her to wait a little longer. Not that she's gonna leave the committee, but, but, but she would hope, I think, to pass on the, the chair part of it. But she's been such a stabilizing force. All of you who know her know that people respect her, they listen to her, she could, you know, she could take me and Ed Maron yelling and make us end up liking each other when the meeting was over, so. But I do like that, that's, um, but, but I'm very excited about it. We've got some plans to increase-
Do your consulting executive session, by the way. Speak up, I don't think I do.
Um, we've got some plans for the inside of creating some, uh, bookshelves, um, and we're gonna actually have a tree going from the floor up to the ceiling with shelves built into it from a tree that'll come from the woods. Peter Cops going to do the work for us. So, so, lots of good things up there. Trails are a mess right now. The trails have, yeah, the trails have taken a hit. Uh, yeah, we, we haven't been out there. April fourteenth will do a lot, but it's, some of this is, is gonna be heavy duty. With Brenda's help and with Larry's help, we've already, um, we have an adjuster coming out Monday to look at the damage that we've encountered in the parks, and, um, because I wanted to show them something, I made Chris DiPaoli walk the trails today and take pictures. So, we're not just making it up, and, and they could see, you know, what happened out there. So, be excited about the woods. You all know that, I know that Chet Kerr approached you guys, and, um, he made a presentation to the Woods Committee, and when he's back, we're gonna have him make a presentation to RPAC. We're probably gonna, uh, publicize it and invite other people, because I think other community members might wanna hear, um, what he has to say. Um, you know, on the surface, there, there's a lot of positives about his report and his study, but there's still questions, you know, that we have, and, um, you know, I've, I've already had a, a preliminary talk with Larry about some of those, and, um, but, uh, you know, we're, we're definitely gonna take a position and get back to you guys on what we think as soon as possible. I promised Chet, as soon as he gets back, uh, we're gonna try to get him to our April meeting, and that way, before he comes to you in May, um, I can make sure that you know where the Woods Committee and RPAC stand on what he's proposing. We'll probably, you know, the night he comes in front of you, um, I would think that, I know, Rick and I will be there, and hopefully Nikki, so that all three, you know, you're not just getting it from me, you'll, you'll see how everybody feels about that. So, so that's, that's the Nature Center. Our parks, um-
Can I just come in?
Sure.
Um, initially, I, I always thought that parking up there would be a problem, but I guess, given all the success you're talking about, enough cars can somehow get in there when you have a popular program?
Big events, parking is an issue. With the help of the Police Department, what we do is, we allow parking on the, on our side of Mountain Road, um, because there's nothing Greenberg-
Snow now. It's snowing. It's really swollen. Oh, it's really-
We're gonna, we'll see.
We'll see.
It's not happening.
So, we, we park, when we have, like, the big events, the Police Department will give us, uh, someone up there, and we'll put two staff with vests on, and we make sure people park. And, you know, it's amazing, the big event in the fall, which we thought we'd have, it's one of the biggest crowds we'd ever had, and we did. The day we did it, there was a rollover on the Saw Mill, and they took all the traffic and sent them our way. And we, and we got through it, but-
That's the way things happen.
Yeah, yeah, but we got, we got through it. So, so, yeah, parking is, is an issue. We've created about six additional spots since it was originally open, and, uh, I don't know if you've been up there, but there's new gates that lead to the compost, which look a heck of a lot better. We put one at the reservoir lot and one there. Uh, we worked with DPW on that to make sure everybody was good with it. But, yeah, parking will, it'll still be a problem. You, you can't have a big event without having a plan and using the police.
The, the programs, toddlers and parents bringing the kids up there is enough for.
Yep, yep. What we do is we, we do coordinate with DPW when we have, especially something big during the day because we ask them to make sure if they're having any trucks come in, that they try to do it early in the morning and that the loaders out of there, it helps. The, the, the biggest problem is the same problem we faced, which is dogs off leash in the woods. We continue to struggle with what to do, but it's still, it's still the number one complaint that I get about the trails in the woods, but we're still working on it. As far as, back to Matheson, we lost all of our blinking lights that were along the shoreline because if you didn't, didn't know, the river was in the park again. Outside of Sandy, it was the worst I'd seen in all my years here. And we, we lost, and they're pretty expensive, those things, so. And the cleanup, labor intense, I mean, there was so much. And we're still not there, and then the second storm came. And at Sina Cutson, we had a, the railroad ties, there was a lot of washout behind them, which will have to be repaired. Some of them moved nowhere near what happened at Sandy, but again, a lot of labor. And you may remember years ago, we had a floating dock.
Yes.
That we've struggled with, but it was on the ramp and it was, it's been there for two years and it's somewhere now in Manhattan, so.
We're beyond.
We're beyond.
That wasn't the only dock that was lost?
No, no, it was, that was, it was quite a couple of days, as you guys know, so. Seeing the river come in the park is just amazing. When you, if you go down there now and you look at the river, you just go and you look and then you think.
Oh, it's impossible, yeah.
It almost seems impossible that the river can come up that high.
The river was across the tracks in Sandy, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, please, don't want to go there, so. So, you know, in, in general, we, you know, we, we keep plotting along. You know, we always have to be a season ahead. The rec center, I hope you like what you see. As you may have noticed, we've done a lot of removal of, of, of the growth that were around the building. I've had the new village landscape architect come and take a look and we've asked her to make recommendations. When I get her recommendations, I will then ask the beautification committee to chime in and we will eventually do some new plantings around the building. But Billy actually looks pretty good right now, you know, takes a look. And if you look at North Ecker Street, you can see we also took everything out of there except for one tree, which Frank Mauer picked out a long time ago, which will stay there. I will protect it with my body if I have to. So the buildings, you know, the building's looking good. We still have some work to do, but, but we're very pleased. And we'll, we'll continue to try to finish it so that it's, it's, you know, ready. We've got some, some touch-up painting to do, but you know, we're, we're very satisfied with how it looks right now. Senior Center's holding up okay. You know, it's over, it's almost 20 years old right now.
That's insane.
So it's.
Oh, one, it's 17 years, you know, it's up there.
You know, when you consider how old it is, the biggest problem with the senior center is, is the heating system. And because there's two separate heating systems, one for the original part of the building and then for the addition, and trying to keep those things running is, is, again, it takes a lot of labor and unfortunately, it takes Chris DiPaoli out of the parks a lot because he's really my, you know, my bane guy to do that. But you know, we're, we're doing okay. You know, I, I, usually I'm here and I've got new things I want or big things. I, I'm asking you to allow us to continue to do the things we've been doing with an understanding that we don't just sit pat and we keep changing and we keep moving, you know. Our staff's hardworking, we will have a new member in our department soon. For those of you who don't know, Angela is expecting a scheduled birth in, in May.
And you've already planning to hire the baby?
She's already on the payroll of the legacy, yeah. So she'll, we'll be without her this summer, but Mike Donardo will be stepping up and taking on most of what Angela's programs were. And he'll be the head person at Teenscape and we'll be hiring an assistant to work with him. We're actually still looking, if you know somebody who think that's qualified, you could, you can reach out to us. But in the fall, because Ange won't be back until September and then Mike's getting married, one of the original budgets had another $4,000 or $5,000 in labor costs. But I was able to secure a college student to do their internship in the fall and I think I've got another one for the spring. So that's great. I think we give a student a great experience. We'll give them a stipend, which is what we've done in the past, but they won't be paid. And the young girl who'll be with us in the fall is a Dobbs Ferry native. Her dad's worked part-time for us, the last name is Coradina. She's a lovely girl and I think she'll be a great addition. And she'll take, she'll help out a lot when Mike's on his five-month honeymoon, I think he has.
So I know you're adaptable from, from year to year and also within the year, so I think this allows you to do that.
It does.
I keep thinking one word that never is associated with you is nimble. I mean, I think you've, you've been pretty nimble in your ability to move things around.
That's why I always have shorts on.
Since I'm always sitting down, I have to be able to do that. But you know, I, 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 I like the fact that we're getting a lot of new young families who are, are getting involved because again, you know, it's not the same. Every, you know, people want different things. And when somebody fills a need that we were filling, you know, some of my staff were looking at it as, you know, they said, gee, I didn't do a good job, that's fail. I said, no, the community dictates what we have to do, you know? And we find what the next thing is, you know? I mean, we, we used to have a wrestling program that had five kids in it. Now we have to have multiple sessions and close it. And we run it multiple times in the year instead of just for a three or four-week period, so.
Well, my takeaway's, I had two, one, less stuff going on with the rec center than people from Portchester say eggs is very different than people from Merbien. Anyone else picked up on that?
Yeah.
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Eggs.
Eggs. Eggs with an egg. I've still learned these things about you.
After all these years.
You can say whatever you want after the compliment about your son, so.
So Tanya, do you have any additional observations? You always play an important role.
Thank you. Now, my only addition would be that it's been really a wonderful experience to be able to work through the grant to support the IS, obviously the IS grant, to support some of these things, to support the summer basketball tournament, to support the winter offseason Teenscape trip by paying for the transportation, you know, working so closely with, with CAB and, and, and the, they're the Positive Impact Club at both the high school and the middle school. And we've really created some great partnerships and been able to financially support some of these things that, that people want and that have been really supportive of kids.
You should be, you should be extremely proud that you have this grant and this community. And the work, the work that Tanya and Allison spearhead with the rest of the volunteers is an amazing thing and, and it's so important. I'll give you a, a great illustration. Regardless of where you fall out on the issue of the kids having their scheduled walkout today. Yesterday was a CAB meeting. They had a filled room, administrators, principals, students, people from all different parts of the community, even with the weather.
Yeah, it was filled, right?
And there was, there was a healthy dialogue between the kids and the adults. And Dr. Harrison represented the school side well. Kids felt, you know, willing to stand up and talk. That doesn't happen anywhere. CAB is an opportunity for, for the kids to bring the issues that are important and not in the school setting, but in a different environment. And Tanya and Allison's work and Lisa, our grant coordinator, you know, they, they, they put a lot of time. I think Tanya and Allison text me more than everyone else that is on my phone because there's never a dull moment and there's always something else to do. And, and I'm, I'm grateful that both of them are, are there with that. I know Rick feels the same way as does the rest of the commission, the, the grant. And if you, just so you know, we'll be applying for the next five years.
I was gonna ask you about the, it's almost time.
Almost time.
It's coming up, it's coming up, it's almost time.
My best.
Wow.
Really quickly, so quickly, I know.
It's amazing, it's amazing.
Yeah, we're, we're in, we're in year four, so we're, you know, we're coming up on that next, like.
If you, you know, and I don't, not that it's a budget item, but feel better that now we have cameras and we're able to watch the parks much better. You know, right now, the, if I call the police department, if I got a call from my friend VK Raga, how do you pronounce?
Raga.
If, if the lights aren't on in the park, VK will reach out to me immediately. He'll also thank me after I answer him. But I call police department instead of having to send a man down the park and say, can you check and see if you see lights on in the park? You know, we have the nature center protected. We've now just, we've gotten signs where we'll be putting them up everywhere that this area is under surveillance. And you know, there have been times I've sat here and told you, you know, how much it's cost. One of the reasons we didn't ask for more money in the labor line is because I'm not going to have to send people out as much to check on some things.
Is it right on the X? Sorry, I was just communicating.
So the, the, the cameras are, and I thank Larry for making that happen and.
You've been talking about it for a long time.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's there and we're gonna do the rec center, will be, it's on the list. But the most, I asked that scenic in the nature center be done ahead of time because we were having so much trouble up there and it's so good to be able to watch that, so. And then, closing for me, you know, I just want to thank Brenda and Larry and their staffs. Karen has been an amazing addition. So when Larry doesn't want to talk to me, I have somebody else who lives in his office.
Good staff as well, Joe, great to work with.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Kind of report there.
We have a, we have a good, we have a good thing going and we, you know, you know you like work when you get disappointed when the department head meeting gets canceled. Because we get to make fun of the chief, so.
Just seeing how you haven't, you have any good feelings in the library, I haven't talked about that earlier, maybe I'll say something bad about Greg Allen before you go.
I love Greg Allen. I love him.
Hey, good Greg.
Good Greg, we call him Good Greg at the department.
Oh, geez.
Good Greg.
Good Greg.
Oh, man.
Well, the fire chiefs.
We better get out of here, like. We're talking about the fire chiefs.
Yeah, 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 no. Thank you so much, thank you, we, we really appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks for everything.
Thank you, thanks for everything.
We'll see you soon.
Absolutely. Keep that rant going.
Oh, we're gonna try, rant going, try, lots of good stuff to do.
Appreciate your time, as always. Yeah, I made a motion with Jern, I got a second, all in fair.